Good morning Birmingham, today is Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023. The time is 9:36. I call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today's invocation will be led by Mrs. Thelma Brown, Susan G. Coleman Scholar, National Cancer Institute's Patient Steering Committee, and I'll be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand. Good morning.
If I can, I would like to take just one moment. As a two-time breast cancer survivor, on behalf of all of the people who are suffering with this disease, those families of those who have lost the disease, I want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, to the mayor, city council people, and the citizens of Birmingham for your unwavering support, not only during Breast Cancer, what I call Action Month, not Awareness Month, not only during Breast Cancer Action Month, but the entire year. In a city like Birmingham, that support is so needed, looking at our demographics. Black women are 40% more likely to die of this disease. We are diagnosed at an earlier age, at a later state, and with more aggressive tumors. So this support, financial, spiritual, emotional support, is so important. We see you, we acknowledge you, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Holy One, known by many names, and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, and Spirit of justice. As we gather here today, in this esteemed assembly, we come together with hearts full of compassion. We pause to recognize the significance of this month dedicated to breast cancer awareness and action. We come together not only as public servants, but as individuals who care deeply about the health and well-being of our community. We hold in our prayers as we acknowledge the courage and resilience of those who have faced challenges of breast cancer, and those who are currently battling the disease, and those who have lost their lives. We thank God for the medical advances that have been made in the treatment of this disease, but we know that there is still so much work to be done. We also ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead this community in which we live, work, and play. Help them as leaders not to ask, "How do we fix this?", but, "What do we need to learn? How might we change?", and to whom we need to listen. Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them that no matter where they live, everyone is our neighbor and our sibling, and that throughout the ages, the prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and the immigrants in our midst, and those who live on the margins, and who are alone, and those who are forgotten. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right, good, and true. May we speak out when it's time to speak out, and listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. This we pray, in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, and all that we hold good, right, and true. Let it be so. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. To the local class, I pray the legal class of 90th century, and to the republic of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, universal, and eternal. Thank you very much, Mrs. Brown, for that very thoughtful prayer, and for helping us to kick off this month of action as we have breast cancer awareness. Thank you very much. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Good morning. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Council President Pro Tim Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. And Council President Alexander.
Good morning, President, thank you. Councilors, the minutes are not ready from the meetings of June 20th, 2023, through September 26th, 2023. Good morning, Chief Sparks.
Good morning, Madam Pro Tim, members of the council, and good morning to the members of the public. Be reading the mayor's report today on his behalf. I want to start by acknowledging what's already been stated, that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and at this time, Mayor Woodfin, members of the administration, would like to acknowledge all breast cancer fighters, survivors, and thrivers in the city of Birmingham. We have some dynamic ones among us right now, as well as those who love and support them. Your courage, your strength, and your tenacity inspire us, and we salute you this month all year. Next, Madam President, members of the council, members of the public, known as the longest-running NCAA Division II Classic in the nation, the Morehouse Tuskegee Classic will be taking place this Saturday, October 7th, at Legion Field. Gates will open at 5:00 PM and kickoff is at 7:00 PM. Tickets are now on sale and can be purchased by visiting morehouse tuskegee classic dot com. The Morehouse Tuskegee Classic festivities begin on October 6th with Food Truck Friday right across the street at City Hall. The event will feature the area's best food trucks and vendors, and it starts at 11 o'clock. Then on Friday night, the official Morehouse Tuskegee Classic concert featuring Yellow Beezy and Trina will take place at Iron City. If you haven't got your concert tickets, sorry everybody, it's sold out in one day. That's on me, baby, that's what the song says. Again, for details regarding this classic, go to morehouse tuskegee classic dot com. Up next, nominate a she-rol for Strong Herd. On October 31st, 2023, the deadline to nominate an outstanding woman for Strong Herd 2024 is fast upon us. Please visit birminghamal.gov/strongherd for more information. Nominees must live, work, volunteer, or attend school in Birmingham. Nomination are open to all ages, so we look forward to celebrating some dynamic she-ros in the city of Birmingham. Uniform trash bin. This is the last phase of uniform trash. For single-family residences that have not yet received a uniform garbage cart from the city, the final delivery phase is now taking place. Please note that this distribution will take up to six weeks. When you receive your complimentary cart, please retrieve the information packet, and note, do not begin using the cart immediately. Again, I repeat, please do not begin using the cart immediately. Wait until you receive a letter from the Department of Public Works identifying your new pickup date and start date. Until then, continue to place your household garbage on the curb side as you usually do. So I state that again, because I know that there's been questions about that, Madam President. When you receive your complimentary cart, please retrieve the information packet, but do not begin to use the cart immediately. Wait until you receive a letter from the Department of Public Works identifying your new pickup date and start date. Until that time, continue to place your household garbage on the curb side as you usually do. If you have any questions about this process, please go to birminghamal.gov/pickup, or text BHAMREADY at 888-777 for updates. Also, the city of Birmingham will continue to keep residents informed about bulk trash pickup, with daily updates online at birminghamal.gov/bulktrash. Residents using the new carts should place them in front of your homes, and any household garbage placed on the ground in alleys or on the ground in front of their residences will not be picked up. You can receive more updates on this one by going to birminghamal.gov/pickup, or again, by texting BHAMREADY to 888-777. Page Pals, Mayor has spoken on this quite a bit over recent weeks. The Page Pals program is seeking volunteer readers and tutors for Birmingham City Schools' third-grade classrooms. The goal is to help these students boost their reading levels. Please select a school and time by going to bhameuthfirst.org/pagpals. For businesses that are looking to support this effort, you can call the Department of Youth Services at 205-320-0879. Lastly, Madam President, Madam Pro Tim, members of the council, and members of the public, at this time, I would like to ask our local lady Wu, Ms. Dana Woodruff, board member for the Birmingham Public Library, and all of the guests that are joining her, if she'd like for them to join me here at the podium. They're here today to share information about the Magic City Classic Kickoff Party fundraiser happening Tuesday, October 24th. Lady Wu.
Good morning. So happy to be here. Classic Cocktails. We want to extend the public an invitation to come out and support the Birmingham Public Library by attending Classic Cocktails on Tuesday, October 24th. Doors open at 5:30 PM at the downtown branch. This event is epic, it's gonna be fun-filled, featuring tailgate-style food, music by DJ Chris Coleman, myself, Lady Wu, and also Funny Man will be co-hosting this event. There will be specialty cocktails, a beer bar, cigar lounge, and fun games. Tickets are $40 per person and can be purchased on Eventbrite slash Classic Cocktails. Now, we know that the classic is about education, that's what it's about first, but then it's about the grid and our action, so we are looking to share our proceeds with the support for library programs in all of our citywide branches, and continuing to push literacy and education. For more information, you can visit www.cobpl.org. We hope that all of you, all of you, will come and join the party. Thank you, and we also have tickets to be sure that you will be there.
Thank you very much.
Madam President, Madam Pro Tim, members of the council, members of the public, that concludes the mayor's report. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate those announcements. At this time, Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements of boards and agencies?
Yes ma'am, we do. First, on the Special Care Facilities Financing Authority Medical Center East, we have Ivan Wesley Holloway, and his term expires November 6th. It's a six-year term, and it will be referred to the Public Safety Committee. Special Care Facilities Financing Attorney Darling Brazel, whose term expires November 25th. This is a seven-year term and is to be referred to the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Thank you very much for those announcements. I'm sure that each counselor has taken note of the committee and their assignment and those openings coming up. Thank you very much. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you provide us the items that are considered for consent?
Yes ma'am. The consent agenda begins on page two with items two, three, and four. On page three, items five, six, seven, and eight. Page four, items nine, 10, 11, and 12. Please note on item number 11, the fourth line, it should be to further amend the Birmingham, excuse me, the general fund, and not the Birmingham fund. On page five, we have items 14. On page six, we have items 15, 16, and 17. Page seven, we have items 18, 19, and 20. Page eight, we have items 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25. And on item number 25, please note that the ARPA funds are District 6 ARPA funds. On page nine, we have items 26, 27, and 28. On page 10, we have items 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, and 34. You should have an amended resolution before you for item number 30. It's removing an item, so the resolution, so actually, this is authorizing the chief financial officer to make five refunds instead of six, in the total amount of $12,751.94. So that's the amendment for that item. And then on page 11, we have item 35, and that completes the consent agenda.
Thank you so much. At this time, councilors, do you have any items that you would like to have added or removed from consent? Counselor Moore.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would like to have item number 18 removed from consent.
On what page? Page seven? Okay.
Seven.
Item 18 on page seven?
Yes ma'am.
Yes, okay. Any other items, councilor? Dr. O'Quinn.
Item number 12 on page four, and item number 15 on page six.
That's item 12 on page four, and item 15 on page six. Thank you. Counselor Pro Tim, or Counselor Williams, sorry.
Uh, Dr. O'Quinn actually had my chat too.
Thinking alike, thank you very much. Madam Pro Tim.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. On page seven, item 19, and then on page eight, item 25.
That's item 19 on page seven, and item?
25 on page eight.
25 on page eight. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial, and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation indicated with a P will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Councilors, if I could entertain a motion and second for approval of the consent agenda.
I move second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And then one abstention from President Pro Tim. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. At this time, if you had any item that was listed as consent, it has been approved. All other items, we will continue by reading the rest of the agenda. We hope you have a great day. Madam Clerk, first item.
The first item is on page two, item number one. An ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC 2023-00008, to change zone district boundaries from D2 Single Family Residential District to QC2 Qualified General Commercial District filed by Brian Harris, applicant representing the owner Huffman Baptist Church for property located at 9701 Parkway East and situated in the northeast quarter of Section 36, Township 18 South Range 2 West, and this is the hearing of our interested parties.
I move approval. I think at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Mrs. Abbott.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Gambrell, will you read our case, please?
Yes ma'am, good morning. Tim Gambrell, I serve as the chief planner for the city of Birmingham, and this is case ZAC 2023-8 in the Huffman neighborhood, and the proposed use is a Jack's Family Restaurant. The subject property sits on approximately 1.87 acres of land currently zoned D2 Single Family District. Abutting the subject property to the northwest are parcels that are zoned CC2 Contingency General Commercial District. Properties to the south and east of the site are zoned D2 Single Family District. This property is in the Parkway East Commercial Revitalization District. The applicant's proposal is to use the site for a Jack's Restaurant. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property as general commercial. The parking requirement for the proposed restaurant has one space per 100 square foot of gross floor area, plus four stacking spaces per drive-through window. Based on the off-site site plan provided, the Jack's would need to provide 36 parking spaces on site. The site plan currently shows 42 spaces. That overage and parking would need to be ameliorated using low-impact development techniques or by building pervious paving to the approval of the stormwater director. The site plan currently shows a dumpster located in the front yard of Huffman Road. Per the city's zoning ordinance, the dumpster must be located in the rear or side within the principal building. The applicant will need to move the dumpster location or apply for a variance through the city's zoning board of adjustment. The monument sign identified on the site plan is permitted in the C2 District. The proposed monument sign appears to comply with the regulations except for height. The monument sign is limited to eight feet in height. The applicant will need to reduce the height of the sign or apply for a variance through the city's zoning board of adjustment. If the zoning is, rezoning today is approved, the city, or this will be, there will be, this will be a C2 General Commercial property that will be located adjacent to a dwelling district on the east and south sides of the site. Therefore, a C-standard buffer is required per the city's zoning ordinance, where C2 abuts a dwelling district. A detailed landscaping plan will be required for permitting. The proposed development will need to have a pre-concept meeting with stormwater staff. All permits and ordinances shall apply, including solar erosion control, civil construction, stormwater permit. All driveways and curb cuts will need to be reviewed by BDOT to ensure adequate ingress and egress. The Huffman Neighborhood Association met its regular scheduled meeting on June 26, 2023, to review the proposed project and voted to support the proposed zoning rezoning request 33 to 0. And they did offer some Q conditions, one, that it would only be a restaurant, and the development shall comply with the site plan as shown on Exhibit A in the zoning case file. This property is located in Northeast Area Framework Plan. The framework plan was adopted in August 2017, and Implementation Committee is not active. Zoning Advisory Committee met at its regular scheduled meeting on August 15, 2023, and voted to recommend approval of the rezoning request 5 to 0 with the same Q conditions as the neighborhood. Planning and zoning committee met on August 23, 2023, and voted to recommend approval of the rezoning request with the same Q conditions as the neighborhood, and that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. I need to amend my motion, my original motion for approval, because this needs to be QC2, not C2. So, Madam President, I would like to make that modification.
All right, thank you, there's an amended motion. Madam Clerk, do we?
Okay, I did read that in the synopsis, it does have the QC, the Q?
I think that I said, I'm just.
Oh, you're just fixing yours.
I said C2, so whatever I said, I want to make sure I said the right.
Okay, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
All right.
Let's see, we need to hear from the applicant, or the applicant's representative?
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
I'm Brian Harris, from Live Oak Parkway. As applicant, here with the landowner, Mr. Bill Sears, executive pastor of Huffman Baptist Church. And we also have Jim Avery with Jack's Family Restaurants, and we're here to ask for approval for change of zoning to QC2 for this piece of property. Huffman Baptist Church has owned this property for over 50 years. We are surrounded three sides by public roadways. To the west is Parkway East, and south is Robot Drive, and east is Huffman Road. Just to orient, in case, you know, we need some weird orientation this morning. Huffman Baptist Church currently has operated some properties in the south, which is also zoned D2. It's the single-family district that's been operated as a church for many years, as well as the property across Huffman Road to the east, owned and operated by Huffman Baptist Church. So while it is single-family residential zoning, it is owned and operated by Huffman Baptist Church. Mr. Gambrell mentioned the dumpster, we're certainly working with planning. Since we have three sides of frontage, we're working on some final orientation on that dumpster to make sure it can be serviced. Jack's understands that if we can't quite finesse it in, they're gonna have to come to the ZBA, same with the signage detail that Mr. Gambrell mentioned as well. So with that, I'd introduce Mr. Jim Avery to come talk a little bit about Jack's Family Restaurants, and he wants to address from a building elevation standpoint.
Good morning, folks. My name is Jim Avery, I'm the vice president of development with Jack's Family Restaurants. With your approval this morning of the zoning map amendment, Jack's intends to build our newest prototype restaurant, that you see the elevations here. It's a building about 3,600 square feet, will have 68 seats inside, and there are, there are six seats underneath a porch, which you see here, that's an elevation on the drive-through, if you can have the elevation. This is the elevation of the front and our entrance. So we have several top tables underneath a, an overhang here, a metal standing seat metal porch, and some exterior seating, and rocking chairs here in the front, 68 seats inside. The materials used on the building, the main gray portion, you can see here, that's a board and pattern material called, called hardy, it's a cement board material. This is a wood composite called Mujiha, and then a dry stacked stone, both as a wings go on the sides of the building and most of the roof base of the building in our fireplace. And then this is a standing seat metal roof that covers our porch. Just to give you an idea, very, very similar, we have a building that looks like this in downtown Homewood, and that building here in Huffman will look very, very similar to that. Happy to answer any questions you may have about Jack's project.
Is there any more to your presentation, or are y'all ready to ask questions? I guess we need to hear from anyone in the community before we ask questions, in case they bring something to our minds, and I know that the president is here.
Good morning to the city council, my name is Theodore Deveraux, I'm the president of the Huffman neighborhood. Several months ago, I guess, we really came before you with approving this property with the denial from the neighborhood for a car wash. And I just really want to thank you as the council members for supporting the neighborhoods in our trying to keep our neighborhoods strong and vibrant. We came back with Huffman Baptist Church, and had several committee meetings, from there had several neighborhood meetings, and we have come to support fully, it was unanimous, of approving the Jack's Restaurant for this property. I think your not approving the car wash really showed government really working with our neighborhood, and we want to thank you for that. Not only now are we having the Jack's Restaurant, we have become an intimate partner with Huffman Baptist Church. Not only are we talking about the restaurant, we are talking about having our meetings now in the Huffman Baptist Church. They have provided some land for us to do a community garden. We have several projects going on. It has just been a wonderful partnership and growth because of that denial a few months ago, and I just want to say thank you. We have, it's been a long road, but we have approved this property and it's. have, it's been a long road, but we have approved this property and its concept, and we think this is going to be a great addition to our neighborhood, really the gateway to our neighborhood where we can assemble to have coffee, fellowship, and really get to know our neighbors even better. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Debro. The committee did feel like this was such a positive situation where we had something good come out of something bad. And so I think everybody won except the car wash, and, you know, they're gone. So, do members of the council have any questions that they'd like to ask regarding this request?
Yes, sir. Sure does.
Yeah. Well, no, it's not. But I don't have any questions. I just love the fact that, you know, there's an opportunity for both parties to walk away feeling like this is a win. I'm glad to see that you all are working together and that it's something that is not going to just benefit the church, not just going to benefit the neighborhood, but it benefits everybody. And so, and y'all got, you know, 68 seats to go sit in and get something nice to eat, you know? So, congratulations.
Don't forget the rocking chair.
Oh, yeah, the rocking chairs as well, you know?
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. I do want to thank Mr. Debro and his acknowledgement of just the work that took place between the business owner, Huffman Baptist Church, and Jack's and the neighborhood. So often, we have these type of situations and when we have to really consider fully the feelings of the neighborhood versus the developer. And so I'm just excited that you all, you all really are a template of how this can continue to work and work in the favor. And so I'm very excited about that. Thank you very much.
Counsel Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I want to echo President Alexander's sentiments and special thanks to Ted who, you know, we've got 99 neighborhoods and the leadership in each of those 99 neighborhoods looks very different. And your strong leadership, I think, is a testament to the fact that your neighborhood is able to get what they really needed and wanted at the end of the day, while, you know, it might have been appealing or not appealing in the short term to get a quick fix to a problem. Your leadership and persistence obviously paid off. And so, congratulations, Ted.
Thank you. Counsel Moore?
I just had one question that I did want to ask. So, I know that, you know, before it was a car wash that I was trying to come in, but now Jack's is, you know, the, I guess, partner that we're, you know, bringing in to this neighborhood. How were, how was Jack's brought to the table? Like, how?
The honest counsel Morris relationship that I've had for several years with Jack's. And we revisited a conversation we had had with him a little over a year ago about the property and confirmed their continued interest in the site. We felt like because of the way they operate and the product that they, that they serve and their ability to really find community in the cities and towns that they go in, that it'd be a really natural fit for this property, for a new neighbor, for Huffman Baptist Church, and for the Huffman Neighborhood as a whole.
Okay. That's, that's good to know. And the only reason I ask is because I know that there are several neighborhoods just like the Huffman neighborhood that would love to be able to have some type of eatery to be brought to their space. We have several different food deserts that are, you know, within our city. And so, trying to find ways to find placement for them would be beneficial. So, thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, I think that we are ready to vote.
Yes, we are. Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation. At this time, we'll call for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Thank you. Item number one passes. And Mrs. Abbott, why don't we go there for lunch one day, rocking those chairs?
Okay, we should.
We'll take protein with us, too.
I like their French fries.
Very good. Thank you. Next item.
The next item is item number 12. Item number 12 on page four. An ordinance to further amend the grant fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024 by appropriating $752,931.22 to the mayor's office from Alabama Department of Environmental Management Recycling Fund to improve recycling or waste reduction per grant award received.
Is there a motion or a second?
I'm of approval.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Dr. O'Quinn, you asked if I'd be removed from consent?
Yeah, just mainly wanted to thank the administration for applying for this funding opportunity. You know, in years past, we haven't been in the competition, and this is something that, you know, is basically free money. And it helps pay for things like, you know, trucks. I think we have something different in mind for this particular instance, but, but, you know, the idea is that this is free money that we're, you know, collecting at landfills as part of the tipping fees. And it's just, you know, great to see that we're in the game and being successful at getting a portion of it. So, and as I understand it, the, this is intended to help restructure our curbside recycling collection. So, very glad to see that we're making investment in that direction.
Thank you, Madam Porteen.
Yes, I think, I think it was Chief Mitchell gave a really good overview of what we're going to spend this grant money on. And I know everybody didn't make budget and finance meetings. So, do you mind kind of talking about what we're going to do with this grant money, please?
Yeah, Madam President.
Yes, Chief.
So, yeah, we were very appreciative of ABM for allowing us to have this grant to kind of build off of what Council Quinn was saying to kind of improve efficiencies with our recycling program. And, you know, being able to have this money that doesn't affect our general fund, so we can have this opt-in, opt-out program for all of our recycling needs. And of course, this grant was in conjunction with UAB, so we hope that we can get more of these grants down the line so we can be more efficient and effective with all our recycling programs.
Thank you.
So, the funding goes towards recycling bins, trucks, and educational material that we will provide to the citizens.
Thank you very much. Counsel Williams?
Thank you. I wanted to know, and Mr. Mitchell, you answered some of our questions, but is, is there a goal to return recycling to a weekly pickup in the city? And what do you mean by opt-in, opt-out?
So, I'm sorry, Madam President.
Yes, Chief.
Yeah. So, if you recall, Counsel, that Mr. Yates presented a update when it came to recycling that we would, it would be more efficient to have a opt-in, opt-out program instead of just having trucks go around the city looking for recycling bins. So, what the council approved most recently was a route wear upgrade to some of our trucks that allows more efficient routes for the Public Works Department to go and find those citizens that have opted in into our recycling program. So, they just won't be scavenging, looking for recycling bins. They have no, they have to go to XYZ route to go pick up those recycling bins.
Okay. So, you know, I, I think that I've been here six years now, or something like that. I don't really know. And I have asked, I think, all six years to do something very similar with bulk trash, where people, which other municipalities do, where people make appointments and so that the bulk trash is similarly not just scouring, bulk trash isn't missed, it's not delayed. They make an appointment with 311, they sit it out, it's picked up within two, three business days or whatever the metric is. So, if we're able to do this with recycling, why can we not do this with bulk trash that I get, and I would say hundreds of complaints a month about bulk trash sitting out in our neighborhoods?
Yeah. So, I think this will be one of those things that allows us at times to be more efficient. So, allow us to work that into the whole program for bulk trash the same way. I, we actually agree with you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Porteen? Counsel Porteen. Dr. O'Quinn?
Thank you. So, to Counselor Williams' question, you know, one of the nice things about this funding opportunity is that there's nothing that, about the grant that says that you can't also use the technology and the equipment for other things. So, you know, we're, we're buying trucks. They may be picking up recycling, but that doesn't mean they can't be used for other waste collection as well. So, we sort of get the, get the opportunity to double dip in that sense. So.
What? In a recycling truck, pick up bulk trash?
No, not necessarily. But, you know, what I'm thinking is, is that if we build out a opt-in system around recycling, there's, you know, nothing that says that we can't use that same system for bulk waste.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott.
Thank you. You know, there's some of us on this council that are just dyed-in-the-wool recyclers. And of course, I am because I know how many millions of dollars we've put into the dump over the years that I've been here. Probably $25 million that I could have spent in my district. Right, y'all? So, I think that a big emphasis should be on letting the citizens know that if they recycle, it will help us not to fill up our landfills as fast and will keep them from spending that $25 million on, you know, I always envision a, you know, a garbage truck backing up with its little beeper on, and it tips up and it dumps all this money down the hill, and then the guy with the bulldozer comes and just covers it up. And that's the end of your tax dollars. So, the other thing I wanted to say is, can we move towards requiring recycling rather than it be optional? You know, in some cities, if you don't recycle, you don't get your trash picked up. And that's, that wakes people up real quick when it starts to smell. So, like, can we move toward, I know our city is not one that we could just demand it and have it work, but can we move towards having mandatory recycling instead of, oh, you can do it if you feel like it or you can send all that stuff to the landfill?
Madam President?
Chief, yes.
Yeah. Counsel, I think that's a very novel idea. I think that's something that we need to coordinate with the council, make it a part of our city code. I don't know if we can demand, but I think we should be able to incentivize people to recycle more than anything. But I think that's something that we should look towards and put in our city code and work with Officer of the City Attorney, see what we can do.
I think it would be good to move in that direction if we could because after all, it's, it's all about money. And I want to keep all the money.
Dr. O'Quinn?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. So, I know on our new, our new garbage trucks, that as they're picking up the cans, they're able to actually weigh the can. So, we're actually getting real data on how much waste we're collecting. I would assume that with recycling trucks, you know, equipment, that we would have that same capacity, but, and I hope so, because that would be, you know, a good step in the direction of helping us to understand, you know, how much recycling is coming in versus what's going into the landfill and being able to use data to make the argument for folks, you know, recycling more. So, I hope our equipment is outfitted with the same type of technology.
Thank you. Yes, Madam Porteen?
Sorry, Chief. I didn't answer this budget finance. I forgot the answer. Where are the bins going? Because I think I asked if some of them could go in the schools? Or is this just for, like, citizens that want them? Or are they going to rec centers?
Yeah. So, this will be just for citizens, I think.
Okay.
President, President Alexander noted that the school has their own recycling program that I'm not, you know, I lean towards her, her infinite wisdom of when she was on the school board, so.
Thank you. Yeah, and that information was based when I was on the school board. I did follow up with them.
Oh, yeah, you did, sir.
Yes, okay. And, but we would be able to reach out and then just talk to them about their recycling program. If I may, I do just want to, I think we've got, made some great, shared some great information today about how this program can be extended to bulk trash. I know that it's just a continual problem that we have in our neighborhoods. And I think we all are encouraged to see this prototype, if it could be moved into that type of bulk pickup as well. I am excited, though, to see that as part of the budget for this money, there's almost $5,000 for education and training. And I think it's very important, that component of education and training, to encourage residents to become a part of this program. I remember when we first started out with our uniform trash bins, I naively said that day that, oh, what are we going to do with all that paper? And what if I get a TV for Christmas? How am I going to put that box into that uniform trash bin? And my counselor slapped me on the hand and said, how about recycling that paper? So, you're very right. So, it just takes that type of encouragement and education to know how we can make this all fit. So, I really want to encourage residents to do this and opt-in and really like the fact that we can offer this. So, any other questions or comments, Counselor? All right. Thank you. We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Thank you. Item 12 passes. Next item.
The next item is on page five, item 13. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute such contracts, agreements, or documents that place an obligation or encumbrance upon the city in amounts of less than $30,000 each or as otherwise provided by law without additional prior approval of the council for the purpose of holding a heroism and valor ceremony at the Harvard Center on October 12, 2023 to recognize the Birmingham Police Department sworn and civilian personnel for their exemplary performance of duty, bravery, and exceptional service in accordance with Section 11-40-22 Code of Alabama, 1975. The total cost of the awards, lapel pins, medals, commendation bars, reception, and ceremony should not exceed a total value of $1,000 for each employee receiving an award. Food and beverages may be provided for employees in attendance of the ceremony. Guests at the event shall purchase a ticket to cover the cost of their meals. All such contracts executed by the mayor for this ceremony shall comply with the Alabama Competitive Bid Laws. The total amount to be expended for the ceremony should not exceed a total of $62,000. This is an item of permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent first.
Motion for unanimous consent?
Second.
Counselmember Abbott?
Aye.
Counselmember Clark?
Aye.
Counselmember O'Quinn?
Aye.
Counselmember Tate?
Aye.
Counselmember Williams?
Aye.
Counselmember Woods?
Aye.
Counsel President Porteen, Smitherman?
Aye.
Counsel President Alexander?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we need a motion on the item.
I'm of approval.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Counselors. Before this is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute contracts, agreements, and documents for holding the heroism and valor ceremony. Any questions or you need any additional information about this item? All right. We're ready for the vote.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Item number 13 passes. Next item.
Okay. The next item is item number 15, and it's on page six. A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute for and as the act of said city a public transportation services agreement between the Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority and the City of Birmingham under which the BJCTA will provide public transportation services as part of a transit system to include fixed route, demand response, paratransit services, microtransit services, and bus rapid transit services within the city limits for an amount not to exceed $14 million, which compensation is comprised of $11 million for fixed route and paratransit services and $3 million for BRT services.
Move the item.
Second. All right. Thank you. Dr. O'Quinn, you asked if we moved from consent?
Yeah. So... Yeah, um, so I just wanted to take an opportunity to say that um back in, I guess it was twenty eighteen, um, the city, you know, under different circumstances, um, really adjusted the agreement with BJCTA, um, you know, just to add more accountability. And that was a major step forward. Um, prior to that, it was, you know, if I had to summarize what the agreement said, was basically on the city's part, we want public transportation, and here's what we're willing to pay for it. And um the rest was open to interpretation. So um again, this uh year, we took the the Transportation Committee, um, really sought to level up again. And um we feel like, you know, we've got a good working relationship with BJCTA and and want to thank um CEO Shaw and her team for for, you know, working with us on this. But um what this agreement really represents is another step forward in saying uh really more explaining more, you know, what the city's expectations are. Um, I think, you know, some of our issues in the past has been uh because of a lack of clarity, um because we haven't clearly stated, um, you know, what our expectations are, um, and so on and so forth. So, you know, I think in any good relationship, um, you know, communication is is key. And when you don't have, you know, expectations clearly spelled out, um, it rep- you know, that's an opportunity for one party or the other to be disappointed. So um trying to, again, level up with this uh agreement and make sure that that doesn't happen. So, you know, uh, specific things that we can, you know, point to are um BJCTA is collecting a lot more data on ridership. And so um they can get very granular um in the level of information that they are providing to us. However, that's probably not something that we um can reasonably digest on a monthly basis in terms of the reports that they provide to us on ridership. So in in the contract, um, we've, you know, written out an expectation that once a year, um, the administration and the council will have the opportunity to to do a deep dive with them, to go over that data and um better understand how people are using the transit system and, you know, envision what adjustments can potentially be made, if any. And um another big issue that we included in in this agreement is um an expectation that BJCTA will begin developing a long-term strategic plan for the the transit system, uh, which, you know, as a an entity who's the largest single investor in the transit system, um, you know, is is important for us to to know what the trajectory is there and to make sure that there's a a clear roadmap forward. Um, so that's just a a very brief summary of, you know, the the type of leveling up that we've um tried to create uh through the Transportation Committee in this agreement. And um I think, you know, this is definitely a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Abbott.
Yeah, I wanted to, and this is related to transit in the My Stop app that you can put on your phone. It is really cool. You can put in the address where you are and the address where you want to go, and it tells you how to get there. And it gives you a map. And it tells you the time it would take to drive in your car, to ride the bus, to walk, to hail something, I guess a rideshare of some sort, or to ride your bicycle. I just thought the app was very well thought out. I'm glad that you're spending some of our money developing tools that people can actually carry around with them in their pocket. Because most people say, well, I don't know where the buses go, and I don't know where to get one, and I don't know where it's going when I get on it. And, you know, they don't know anything. And and so they don't use it. So I want to compliment y'all on this app because this is a really nice app. Y'all should put it on your phone.
Thank you. Madam Protem?
Uh, thank you, Madam President.
I really just want to sing Dr. O'Quinn's praises. He really has transformed uh transportation in the city of Birmingham, along with Charlotte Shaw, uh, just the things he's brought, like microtransit. I was telling them I use Via a few weeks ago because I had to drop off my car at the car wash. And I was like, well, instead of waiting out here in the hot sun, let me just take it to the office. And so I was able to take it to the office and get my work done instead of waiting an hour. So I had a very great experience. The driver was great. Um, it was very clean environment. Honestly, I almost felt a lot safer than using Uber. So and that says a lot. But thank you, um, Council O'Quinn, for not giving up on this. Because I know you weren't satisfied with that first, and you said, no, I don't really support it. So you guys trust me. And so I just really, really want to thank you for all that you do. It it really means a lot that you care about transportation the way you do.
Thank you. Council Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, also echoing uh uh Council Smitherman's sentiments. And thank you, Dr. O'Quinn, for your work on this. I'm glad that we were able to get um some metrics in the um the agreement instead of uh Xeroxing the agreement for the past thirty years. So and Valerie, I am going to look at that app because I haven't downloaded it yet.
My trip.
My trip.
My trip.
But I'm not going to let this moment pass us without me talking about how great it would be if we could have a metro-wide Via system where Counselor Smitherman's experience could be experienced all throughout the city of Birmingham and all throughout our metro area with all thirty-two municipalities participating. It's been extremely successful elsewhere in the state. It's been extremely successful elsewhere in this country. And um there's a lot of things that you can do when you are in a uh a Via where you can be dropped off a block or two away, um than a fixed route bus that might not be on time. So I will, that's all I have to say about that.
Right.
Thank you very much. Of course, I want to echo as well, um, the work that Dr. O'Quinn has done with the Transportation Committee and to bring us these other options, and especially CEO Shaw for um her tremendous um uh work with the Transit Authority and um listening to some of the issues that have been brought forth by the city of Birmingham. And so we appreciate you. Um, I did just want to go back, and I know this council is very data-driven. So I am excited to see the reporting requirements or expectations that have been built in. And it says, monthly, we get those riderships, and then they'll be passed on to the Transportation Committee, and then you're going to pass those on to the council, correct?
Yes. Yes. And please, um, you know, I'll have to set up myself a calendar alert or something. But if I ever, uh, don't, you know, advance those to y'all, please don't hesitate to remind me that I need to do that.
Will definitely do that. Thank you very much. Any other comments, councilors? All right, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you. Item fifteen passes, and we thank you very much. Next item.
The next item is item eighteen. It's on page seven. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with Meeting Street Investments, Inc., doing business as Meeting Street Graphics, and an amount not to exceed five thousand four hundred dollars to provide the following goods or services to the city. The provider will reface and repair the existing entry signs at Norwood Boulevard and Fifteenth Avenue North and at Norwood Boulevard and Vanderbilt Road, reface freestanding signs both at the Norwood Community Center and at Thirty-first Street, and repair one existing sign at Norwood Park in the Norwood Neighborhood. Said funds to come from the Norwood Neighborhood Association.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, thank you. Councilmore, you asked to remove this from consent.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I had a question, but it has previously been answered. Uh, I know that this, you know, means a lot to the Neighborhood, the Norwood Neighborhood Association, uh, to have these signs repaired, um, you know, because it just, you know, speaks to just neighborhood branding. Um, but on that note, uh, the question was posed to me also about banners for neighborhoods, um, the banners that are able to be put up on, you know, light poles, uh, for neighborhoods to, you know, have like their logo and their their name. Um, was trying to find out who would neighborhood associations need to speak to, or how would they need to go about uh getting some of those put in their neighborhoods?
Chief?
Yes, ma'am. Um, Councilmore, it's it's one of those situations that we're trying to really figure out since right now we don't really own the light poles because they are now under um control of Alabama Power Company. So it just depends if they already have the existing brackets that were part of the install that the city did, then we're we're responsible for those brackets. But if they if they improve or add new brackets to light poles, we have to get permission from Alabama Power Company to install those. Because they technically, once we did the the switch over from the LED lights citywide, we don't own those those poles anymore.
So as long as we get permission, though?
Yeah.
Then we're able to.
And then we would, oh, yeah. And we would, we would actually like them to be uh third-party out because we don't have the capacity to install any brackets or banners.
Got it. Okay.
So let me follow up on that question. So if a neighborhood wanted to participate in that, would that be something they should do through Mrs. Alice Williams and the CRR?
Exactly what we were discussing. Yeah, they should make that request to us first. So they shouldn't make the request, they should make the request to Ms. Williams. They will then elevate it to us, and then we'll do the coordination with Alabama Power. So if they're interested in participating, please have them contact Ms. Williams or their CRR representative.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you. Item eighteen passes. Next item.
The next item is also on page seven, item number nineteen. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents required for the city to complete a grant with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, Office of Community Planning and Development Pathways to remu- pathways to removing obstacles to housing, and an amount of up to one million dollars to identify and remove barriers to affordable housing production and preservation with no matching funds due from the city, and authorizing the mayor to take any and all actions and execute such documents as are appropriate and necessary to accept and expend the grant funds on behalf of the city in accordance with the grant documents.
Move the item. Second.
All right, thank you. Council Smitherman, you asked to remove this.
Yes, thank you, Council Alexander. Um, so I had a question about this item because I think you said briefly about what we're doing with it. I'm looking at the back of the um agenda with all the items, well, with the material items, and it says things that I think a lot of, this is Mike, um, a lot of issues we have with like light, for example, lack of neighborhood amenities and different things like that, which I think majority of our neighborhoods are dealing with. So I wanted to know what were we going to do exactly with this one million dollars?
Good question.
Chief Sparks?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President. Madam Protem, we have Dr. Megan Venable-Thomas, who's here. She's going to come up and speak to this item.
But I was, um, Madam President, very encouraged when we went to CBC and we got that federal lobbyist briefing that we are applying for federal grants to help us move towards more affordable housing. So I was really happy to hear about that.
Yes, um, and I think also-
Good morning, Dr. Thomas.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us. Um, and thank you for considering this grant. Um, I think, to your point, um, Counsel Smitherman, the federal government is also recognizing that not just money for housing and development of housing itself is important, but also recognizing that there are a lot of other barriers that make building and constructing and sustaining affordable housing really important. Um, and so this grant in particular is about thinking about how you decrease those barriers that are in the way of actually getting even to development of affordable housing. Um, and so it is a ten million dollar award. And specifically for us, we wanted to focus on some of the the critical components that are challenges for the city of Birmingham and some of our departments and partners across the city, which are time, um, the time it takes to actually develop affordable housing. In that process, often increases more barriers to that development happening. Um, and second is cost. I'll talk a little bit more about that. Obviously, the cost of developing affordable housing is significant. Um, and uh also creates barriers for developers, to even incentivize developers to want to do affordable housing. And then capacity. Um, having our own internal local capacity to do affordable housing development is really important because it allows us to do more transformative work that's informed by our community and actually creating more sustainable housing because it's addressing and centering the needs of our community. And so a little bit more about time, um, really decreasing the the barriers that we have to being able to move things faster. Um, and so one of the things that we want to focus on in this grant is how do we think about a concierge or even fastlane um through our city that allows us to really focus on affordable housing and incentivize affordable housing and happening, and being able to do it a little bit more quickly. And that's from our department in community development, to PEP, to BDOT, to uh legal, to all the different folks that actually have to come together in order to make affordable housing happen. Um, how do we really learn how to collaborate and make our systems more efficient? Uh, and so that's one of the focuses. Two is around cost. So really seeding development for some of our most challenging developments. So even starting from thinking about how um homeless services and homeless housing um is supported, which is our most challenged affordable housing to uh create, maintain, and sustain. Uh, and so we also often need a lot of gap financing for that. And so a big portion of this will go towards thinking about not only the development of of affordable housing that's for our most impacted, but also the wraparound service provision that's really required. Um, and that will couple with some of the other programs that we're currently working on. And then the last is around capacity, capacity building. So we've been working on a program, um, that you'll hear more about soon, um, that is really helping us to see the development of community development corporations and community development housing organizations, which are two of the country's most um community-based organizations that really create the development of affordable housing across the country. Um, and we have very few in the city of Birmingham. And so some of that is because people don't know about the opportunity. Some of it is because people don't know how to start it. And so we're working on a program that helps to create the curriculum, that helps to create the support, um, and create a cohort with experts across the city and across the country, one of which is Enterprise Community Partners, to help us think about how do we do that and invite our local organizations in to really be able to create community champions that can lead um this development work and to do it at scale. Um, and so those are the kind of three big buckets that we're focusing on with this work. I can say a little bit more specifically about how each of those dollars will go, um, if you'd like to hear that. But uh, any questions that you might have, I'm happy to consider.
Uh, well, yes, honestly, because I think that's one of our top issues in every district is affordable housing. Um, I was talking to a friend last night who was staying in the family house in Pratt City, and she was talking about how Pratt City felt left behind, et cetera, et cetera. I was like, well, no, we're working on some grants for Pratt City. But I hear so many people wanting to move into Birmingham, but they can't afford it, or we have so much light, it seems overwhelming. So um, I really appreciate you for this. Are, do you have any specific neighborhoods you all are looking at, or is this just a general overview?
Yeah, so it's generally, a lot of this, we're hoping, again, is going to focus on um our institutions, our efficiencies, to be able to help us support a better pathway to development, um, that will impact all of the work that we're currently doing, um, and seed work, we think, for the future across our neighborhoods. Um, and so I can say a little bit more about that. Um, the the Magic City Community Champions Program, that's just a a light name. We haven't landed on anything yet about that capacity building for local developers. We're we're, um, and so also, just to take a step back, before we even actually submit this grant, there is a public hearing process. So we'll put out to community- So we'll put out to community, to the city, to be able to respond to what we're proposing here and tell us, we like that, we think it should go here, we don't like that, we think it should go there. And that's kind of a baked in process with a lot of our HUD grants, but in particular, this one is no different. And so there is an opportunity for people to weigh in on how they think that this money should be spent or where it should be allocated. And so for that capacity building program, we're setting aside two million, which is really around being able to seed not only the development and the curriculum of the program, but also be able to seed some funding to a pilot program of a couple of different local organizations that want to get started and are ready to get started to actually work on some development projects. Our Affordable Housing Trust, so we were revolutionary in doing the Affordable Housing Trust. And now we're working on what does the governance look like? How do we think about what are sustainable mechanisms for financing? How might we want to leverage and utilize this in the most innovative ways? And so we've set aside about five hundred thousand for us to get some consultants in to help us think about that. We have a fellow, a Bloomberg Harvard Fellow in the Department of Community Development, who's helping us to think about that and doing some research on that. And so she'll also be working on the advocacy and legislative process and thinking about like what else is actually really needed for us to be able to best optimize this trust that we already are thinking really thoughtfully about. The other bucket is again about homeless service provision and development of actual housing, which we know and I know you all hear a lot about. And there's a big gap there, and part of it is because financing is so challenging to be able to do, but also to do thoughtfully with wraparound service. So we've set aside five million for that. And then thinking about that fast lane, we've set aside one point five to think about how we actually build the capacity of our internal partners and external partners to do this work better. And then finally, we usually set aside sixteen percent for admin and compliance. We've been trying to bake that into all of our grants to make sure that we're obviously following the guidelines to the best of our ability and able to effectively administer any grants that come in. And so we have a sixteen percent, about one million, set aside for the admin and compliance component.
Okay, and you said, what was the five million? You're using the second five million?
Yes, that is for homeless, those experiencing homelessness, production of housing. So it would help us to seed actual development of housing as well as support wraparound service provision.
Okay, thank you so much. This is really helpful information. I really want to thank you for the public hearing process. I think it's so important that we get community input because they're the ones who have to go through this change and they're the ones who have the new neighbors and they're really affected a lot more. And so I think it's very important that we give voice to our residents. I just want to say thank you for this information. This is amazing. I feel like I'm on information overload. But if, well, we're gonna say, we're gonna claim we're gonna get this grant. I would love for us to put a PR out and see if we can help you out because I think this is great information for the residents to know. Because I think a lot of times they're in the dark about things. Maybe they can't watch council meeting, but they need to know all of your good work. And I know Mayor Wiffen isn't here, but I think you're one of the best hires he's made in his tenure, honestly. Like, seriously, like, I really, this gives me a lot of hope, honestly. So thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to ask some questions.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, Counselors? Counselor O'Quinn?
Yes, so does the summary here need to be corrected to ten million versus a billion?
Oh, yes, it does. Ten million is the max and we're always going for the max.
Glad you noted that because I thought, am I not reading my zeros correctly? So thank you. I do want to echo just the excitement for us going after this particular funding. We know how important it is for affordable housing. And I'm very excited to see the component of the capacity will include affordable housing around homelessness. And also, I was reading the priority geography. And so of course, I know that's very important to us where these opportunities would be placed within each of our nine districts. And so lastly, very excited to know of including residents in it on the front end versus on the back end. Because typically, you don't know that this type of housing is being brought to your neighborhood until those decisions have already been made. And I think if we enlighten our residents more about how this will help those current residents as well as to build that neighborhood, then that's more important, getting that on the front end than the back end. And so I echo again, we're just excited for the work that's being done under your leadership in that area. And I'm gonna end it by saying, I was also excited when we went to DC and heard from our lobbyists on how we're including this as part of our strategic plan to go after these type grants. So thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Right, we're ready for the vote. Thank you, Dr. T.
Excuse me, Counselor. President Alexander, so on item nineteen, the resolution should be ten million dollars and not one million dollars?
Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, so the resolution, okay, so we're going to revise, we'll just amend the resolution. The resolution that I have before me says one million. So we just need to amend that resolution to say ten million.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, with everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you. Item nineteen passes. Next item?
The next item is item number twenty-five. It is on page eight. A resolution accepting the unit price bid of Gallipsby Construction LLC Jasper, Alabama, in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand, five hundred ninety dollars for West End sidewalk repairs located in Birmingham, this being the lowest responsible and responsive bid submitted, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Gallipsby Construction LLC and substantially the form contained within the bid documents and in accordance with said bid, providing that the total compensation payable under the contract not exceed the appropriation.
No doubt.
Second.
All right, thank you, Counselor Smithman.
Thank you, Madam President. This is another one of our amazing ARPA projects we've got moving. I'm really excited about this because this is improving the sidewalks in West End. I just wanted to say the locations that will be there. So it's from Cotton Avenue from Twelfth Street Southwest to Eleventh Street Southwest, both sides. Cotton Avenue from Eleventh Street Southwest to Tenth Street Southwest, South Side only. Twelfth Street Southwest from Cotton Avenue to McMillan, both sides. Twelfth Street Southwest from Tuscaloosa to Cotton, West Side only. And then Cotton Avenue from Thirteenth Street Southwest to Twelfth Street Southwest, North Side only. And one of those sidewalks is really right where Hemp Hill Elementary School is because I really think, not just for my district, for everybody, we really have to focus on the sidewalks where our schools are. The kids walk there every day and, you know, that's not, you know, that's not fair for them for to be tripping up on the sidewalks. But basically, I'm really happy to hear this and I just wanted the public to know this is happening. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Smithman. This is such an innovative way and a great use of ARPA funding. And so I thank you for bringing that to your district and to the West End area. It's something that I really want to consider and think about for myself, where use of those dollars. So I appreciate that. We were just in a conversation yesterday with members of the Grisilla Heights Neighborhood. And sidewalk repair or sidewalk maintenance is very important. And especially to a lot of our legacy neighborhoods where, you know, you've just had sidewalks that haven't had any work done on them. I know we set aside funding for sidewalk project, but of course, that's just to assess the problem and not necessarily fix it, is what I remember for our budget. Is that correct? All right, thank you. So thank you, Counselor Smithman. Again, I love the innovative use of those five dollars. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comment? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you. Item twenty-five passes. Next item?
That is the last item on the agenda.
Thank you very much. Counselors, at this time, we'll be happy to entertain any comments or updates you have from your various districts. And Counselor Williams, are you ready?
All right, economic development and tourism will have a work session today at eleven thirty in Conference Rooms D and E. Eastwood Neighborhood will be meeting Thursday, October the fifth, at six thirty at Habitat. And Roebuck will be meeting Monday, October the ninth, at six thirty at the East Precinct. And a special shout out to everybody that participated in Fiesta this weekend and the scholarship recipients, which most people think that Fiesta's more of a time to go get food. But the purpose of Fiesta is actually to provide scholarships for high school age kids that are going into college. And so we were happy to participate in that. And it is good food, but also there's a really good purpose behind it.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Moore?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So tonight, we have the Fairmont Neighborhood Association that's taking place at six PM. We have the Brummitt Heights Neighborhood Association that'll also be taking place on this Thursday at the Brownsville Heights Community Center at one PM. Engle Nook, Woodline, and Roebuck will all be having their neighborhood associations that will take place on Monday, as well as Airport Highlands. And so if you live in any of those neighborhoods, please make sure that you attend those. Bulk Trash and Pickup, October fourth, South Woodline will have their pickup. October fifth, Northeast Lake will have theirs. October sixth, Kilo Springs. October ninth, Woodline and Brummitt Heights. And October tenth, Fairmont will have theirs. And so we have some upcoming committee meetings that will take place. The Education Committee will be held this October sixteenth at one PM in Conference Rooms D and E at City Hall. As well as the Housing Policy Committee will be having their meeting October seventeenth at three thirty PM at Conference Rooms D and E. And that concludes, oh, Woodline High School will be playing Parker this Friday. We ready? Let me see, and then on October seventeenth, from ten AM to two PM, Jefferson County DA's office will be hosting their Second Chance Job Fair at the Bowwell Auditorium for former offenders. And so we want to make sure that if that's something that will benefit you, that you attend. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We were wondering if you'd be a little sleep deprived. I know you have a new member of your family.
Yes, yes. So on last Tuesday, you know, my wife and I were very fortunate and blessed to welcome the fourth and final child. To our, I'm more than positive. It was a miracle that he made it through, to be real. But, yeah, so we had our first son, Remy Ali Moore. And so really excited about it. He was seven pounds, two ounces, and twenty inches long. So, yeah. Yeah, we make it.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
He'll always be known as Caboose to me, so. Thank you. Congrats to you and your family. Mrs. Abbott?
Does that mean his nickname's Cal? Let's see. This is October third. I would like to extend sympathy to the Bossani family in our neighborhood for their loss over the weekend. Very sad. And I also want to extend a happy birthday to my walking buddy, Gene White, whose birthday is today. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October eleventh, at three thirty PM in Conference Rooms D and E. I can't believe we're talking about October. How did it get here so fast? Neighborhood meetings tonight, Forest Park, South Avondale meets at the Avondale Library. If you have concerns or issues, of course, you should call three one one or use the wonderful My Behem three one one app that you can add photographs to. And I wanted to mention the Southside Community Framework Plan Public Meeting. There's one on October twelve at six o'clock at the Highlands United Methodist Church in Five Point South. If you don't know where that is, it's the church right either in front of the fountain or behind the fountain. Of course, the fountain doesn't work, but you can at least see it. And it says Five Point South on the front of it. So that meeting is very important to, for everyone to give input into these framework plans and not just let them happen to you. And then find out later there was something in it that either you didn't like or you have a fabulous idea that you didn't tell anyone about. So that's October twelve at six PM at Highlands United Methodist Church. And I did want to ask the administration, how are these meetings publicized? What are y'all doing to let residents know that these are occurring?
Madam President?
Yes, I'm sorry, Chief.
So I'll get Ms. Alice Williams. The Community Development Department is the one, are the ones that are responsible for the notifications, and they use a number of ways, but I'll get the specific processes that they use and provide that to your Counselor Abbott.
Okay, good, thank you. Because it always fascinates me, the number of people who later, of course, say, I never heard about that. You know, how was it publicized? And of course, you know, I don't know, we don't have a newspaper anymore. I guess because nobody read it. So, you know, you do want people to show up because after all, if they don't have any input, then they'll be complaining to their council member later.
Madam President?
Yes.
And our Planning, Engineering, and Permits Department is also a part of that process as well. So our director, Katrina Thomas, is gonna send that to you as well.
Good.
We'll provide it to all of the councils for your info.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to go to another meeting that has twelve people in it. You know, that's very disappointing.
Thank you. Counselor O'Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. So Counselor Woods and I will be traveling to Orlando next Monday. We're doing a little bit of a exploratory mission to learn more about autonomous vehicle in the context of public transportation. And also, we'll be checking out the Bright Line High Speed Rail between Orlando and Miami. A lot of us here on the council are, you know, think that that's a great idea for the South, especially between Birmingham and Atlanta. So we're gonna go see firsthand what that looks like in the context of Orlando to Miami. So we'll have a report on that. But because of that travel, we're having to call, do a special call Transportation Committee meeting tomorrow at noon, Conference Rooms D and E. And amongst the items that we have on the agenda are the much anticipated pavement management agreement, which I know that is gonna be a big deal for all of us. So I'm extremely anxious to kind of dig into that and see what's being proposed. Also, interestingly, is an agreement between BJCTA and the Southern Rail Commission, which I hope has something to do with our passenger loading platform at our Amtrak station. So I'm very curious to see what's in store for us there, too. So again, that is a special call Transportation Committee meeting tomorrow at noon, Conference Rooms D and E in City Hall. Eastlake Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six PM at Household of Faith Church. Forest Park, South Avondale will also meet tonight at six thirty at Avondale Library. Wauhoma Neighborhood Association meets on Thursday, October fourth, at six PM via Zoom. Please call my office at two five four, two six seven nine if you need that call in information. And then next Monday, the Oak Ridge Park Neighborhood Association will meet at six PM at the Harris Homes Recreation Center on Brussels Circle. SBA, the Small Business Administration, will host a lending overview workshop on Wednesday, October fourth, from five thirty to seven thirty at Creed sixty-three, which is located at sixteen oh one Fifth Avenue North in the Arthur Shores Law Center. Registration is available on Eventbrite. And then, finally, want to remind people to get vaccinated. I got my COVID booster and flu shot yesterday. I'm a little off this morning, but not nearly as bad as that first booster. But anyway, you know- But anyway, you know, that's, the new vaccine is available. It's super easy. I think I went to CVS, walked in, you know, I had to wait maybe a few minutes, but super easy in and out. You can register online and advance, schedule your appointment. Walgreens does the same thing, and I think they're offering like a $20 coupon or something like that. So, super easy, you know, go ahead and take care of that while you have the opportunity. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn. Madam Pro Tim?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Tate is in here, so I'm going to say her announcements. The Wyland Neighborhood Meeting will be tonight at 6:00 PM at the Wyland Library. Finley Neighborhood Meeting will be held tomorrow at 6:00 PM at First Baptist Church. North Birmingham Neighborhood Meeting will be next Monday, October 9th, at 6:00 PM at North Birmingham Rec Center. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 10th, at 1:00 PM. Please submit agenda items via email by tomorrow, no later than noon, to Beatrice Collins and Greg Stanley. If you have any questions or concerns, feel free to contact the D9 Office, extensions Also, well, these events are for both of us. We'll be having our Safe Summer Concert this Sunday, October 8th. Sorry, at 5:00 PM, but we encourage people to get there early. It will be at the Legion Field Bus Parking Lot. We will have Stogli and Young vocals. We will have food trucks, giveaways, and some food trucks will have Fat Charles, I think, A-Train, Lemonade Junkies, Not Even Ice, Popcorn, everybody. And we'll be having giveaways, and y'all know Counselor Tate loves to dance, so we'll be doing line dances, and she has the good knees challenge she has, she did last year. I don't know, y'all, we'll see. But come out here, I think it's supposed to be good weather as well. I know Counselor Clark is in here, but I think she's having the event on Saturday, too. She's having a Jazz Fest at Brickwood Field from 1:00 to 6:00, or 1:00 to 7:00. Blues, sorry, Blues Fest. So, before you go to the Morehouse Ski Games off of Brickwood Field and support another council's event. As far as my announcements, we have Oakwood Place Neighborhood Meeting today at 4:00 PM at Harrison Park Rec Center. The Mason City will be held today also via teleconference at 4:30 PM. The calling number is 712-770-8017, and the access code is 843426. Then, we have North Tiddlesville tomorrow afternoon at 5:00 PM at Memorial Park Rec Center. Then, on Monday, October 9th, we have West End Manor Neighborhood at 5:00 PM at New Hope Baptist Church. The next PIC Committee Meeting will be today at 2:00 PM in Conference Rooms D and E. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will be next Monday, October 9th, at 3:30 PM in Conference Rooms D and E. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Submissions received afternoon will be placed on the next Budget and Finance Agenda. Email submissions to liquia.wilson and ethan.harris. We will be having our October Health Form this Thursday from 5:00 to 6:00 at the West End Library, and the topic will be around mental health awareness. We'll have Eddie Sharp with Brother, Let's Talk, and then, Dr. Naya Richardson with Black Women's Mental Health Institute. Also, I received some information, there will be a Community Fall Festival this Saturday from 10:30 to 1:30 PM at Legion Field. There'll be free food, games, prizes, space painting, youth basketball tournament, clothing giveaway, pros giveaway, and more. And then, lastly, we will have our District 6 District Wide Cleanup this Saturday, sorry, at 8:00 AM. We'll be at four locations for Mason City, First Baptist Church in Mason City, for Oakwood Place, Harrison Park, Tiddlesville, Holy Family, and West End Hemp Hill Elementary. We'll have supplies and refreshments, and you can sign up to volunteer at d6bham.com/events. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. These are announcements for District 7. Just want to remind residents that there is free tutoring. It's an eight-week program that's taking place right now at Wiggins Park. The time is from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. I want to thank Delvin Maston and Vernon Brown. They are the architects of bringing this free tutoring to the Wiggins Park community, so thank them very much. You can also see a flyer on the D7 page if you need to contact them, but that's free tutoring. It's an eight-week program from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM. The Winona Dragons will play on Thursday, October 5th, and they're playing at Legion Field against Ramsay Rams. That game starts at 7:00 PM. So, we won't wager any bets or anything, but that's Counselor Pro Tim and my, both of our alma mater, so they'll be there on the field on Thursday. Saturday, October 7th, the UAB Blazers play at Protective Stadium. They're playing the South Florida Bulls, and that'll be at 3:30 or either 4:00 PM. Game starts at Protective. On Monday, October 9th, Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood meets at the Oxmoor Valley Community Center. That meeting is in person at the community center at 6:00 PM. And then, West Goldwire meets via conference call. We're gonna confirm that, because it's on our calendar, but we just want to be sure it meets within their quarterly meeting. And so, we'll update you on the D7 page regarding that meeting. Bulk Trash and Brush is also scheduled for Monday, October 9th, in the Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood. That concludes my announcements for District 7. We do not have any speakers, and so, at this time, we want to thank our police officers who are on duty, and we thank them for their service. And at this time, we'll entertain a motion, a second for adjournment.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Meeting adjourned. And just those officers were James Hall, Morris Garner, and Andrew.